I'll call the final select board to order at about 7:04. Agenda approval, is there anything to be added on the agenda before I go through it? I guess not. Anyway, minutes, warrants, mail, old business. Mowing bids, special election date, Better Back Roads program, grant applications. Oak Hill School Road, drainage discussion with Josh Carvajj. How do you pronounce that name?
Carvahal.
Carvahal?
Carvahal.
Carvahal, okay, good enough. And new business, we got Michael Batch here. And also Josh is gonna talk on that for the Husick corridor plan. So, I get a motion to approve them. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes. Minutes of, uh... April 7th.
I move to approve them.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, warrants. Accounts payable. The figure there is $60,203.52. The big ones is sewer bond payment, $32,309. And payroll transfer for the IRS, $1,975.05. Oh, gravel crushing, yeah, I saw it. Yeah, we did gravel crushing, that was $21,400. Remember the big ones on the accounts.
Four thousand yards, right?
Yes.
Four thousand yards, which is good. Alright, now payroll. And the figure for that is $6,012.12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, mail. We've got some trucks for overweight permits. Davy Oil and Phoenix Feeds and Nutrition.
So... I move to sign on both.
Okay. Did you second that, Henry?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, aye. Alright, well, we got liquor license for James and Pooey Jelly in North Powell. So...
Move to sign it.
Move to sign it. Well, I gotta sign that anyway. And another liquor license for Stewart's.
Move to sign that also.
Second, all in favor? Aye. I got a letter in here from the select board, shall I read it? Am I supposed to read these letters from the citizen? No, I shall read it. To the Pownell Select Board. Imagine my surprise upon learning that our road foreman had tendered his resignation. I considered this a loss for our community. Casey Madison knew every inch of the roads in Pownell and worked hard to keep them in good condition. It's sad when the people who are supposed to be looking out for our best interest are not. Why is it that you won't listen to the one person who knows our roads better than anyone else? Just one example, the gravel for our roads will now be costing us more because you decided to farm it out instead of having Casey and his crew do it. I think the board needs to be reminded of who our road foremen were before Casey took over the position. I think, I take it for the letter, but that's, that's her opinion. I think we did well getting the gravel made up, reasonable. And, look, I agree with part of it, but that's the letter anyway. So, that's the mail, old business. We got mowing bids.
We have four bids, um, for, and for both primary and the pump stations, so there's four each. You wanna do the pump station or do you wanna do the primary first?
Doesn't matter.
Just do one at a time, you're gonna get confused. Everybody got pump station?
This here is pump stations. Pump station bid. Okay. Well, uh...
So you'll open them all?
He doesn't have, well, he doesn't have them all added up, see, they're individual.
They were due for seven up to eight.
So, I guess... See, this felt like they've added up, so Jason's probably got a calculator, you can add that up.
I don't, I don't, but if we have one here, I can... Actually, I do have one here, I do.
Okay, this is one of them. And...
Yes, I do, thank you.
This one, there's Robert. Gratz, Robert Gratz.
Let me see that one on the bottom, just for that, no, this one, right.
That was... Robert Gratz is 505.
Do you remember how many times we wrote that?
Yep, it's in the, it's, it's...
It was in the...
It was in the spec sheet, four times.
Okay.
That's pump stations too?
Yep.
Okay. Do you add that other one up, Jason?
I'm, I'm in the first one right now.
Okay.
Okay, keep that, there's no way I can do that.
No.
Just those two, right?
Yeah. Alright, so, like I said, we had Robert Gratz here, it's 505. And, uh...
I think that came from there. And that sort of just went on the floor.
Okay, so, that one there is 165, okay, and then the fire pond is separate.
Well, J Landscaping, it's, uh, 120 per mowing and 120 for spring cleanup.
120?
Yes, for spring cleanup and 120 per mowing for, well, everything was, well, the fire pond was included in that. Okay? Well, it was 11 places, I don't know how many he had on that other one. Right there. That didn't include that.
The fire pond, I think we've said it for four times.
Four times a year?
Yep, once a month.
Okay, well, um... That was George Harkins?
Yep.
S and H lungs?
Yep.
And that was $165?
Yep.
For the 10? And, uh, $100, four times a year. The other ones were per mowing, so I, I don't know, I guess they just determined that by how high the grass is, I guess. But he was 165... That was J Landscaping?
Yep.
Alright. Question on that.
Was that, was that bid out as needed?
I will mow and trim the fallen properties. Is that how, is that...
I don't know, I'm just kinda confused in there for a second, that's all.
Can I read the other one, Ronnie?
Yeah. Which one didn't you get?
I read George's, I didn't read the other one. The J Landscaping.
This one you did.
This one, I guess.
That's just back there.
Okay, yeah, I read that.
And you wanted, Jason wanted to look at this.
You wanted this one here?
Yep.
This here is Weaver?
Yep.
Alright, I added them up on the back, anyway, that's, that's who it is. This here must be a price per mowing. Says unit price there. That's all I could see.
Yep, and then down here, in dry period, it changes. That bid, they've been like that for many years. Which makes sense, I mean, for that.
This one here broke it out, price per week times 27 weeks for the mowing season. That's how that one's broken out.
This one is all broken out by the looks. It's got price per week, mowing all grass, blowing off all the excess grass. Is that what was in the bids spec for everybody? Okay, alright, 27 weeks.
This is for the cemeteries, you saw it.
Pump stations.
Pump stations. And it's, this one has got them broken out, number two, number three, number four, they're all different prices.
So what is, does it have a total per week?
It's got a, uh... He had a total, a grand total, yeah, he's got a total, a unit price, I presume that must be at $500. Cause the grand total for the year would be 7,070. That's all I see. But he's got them down, well, 27 weeks, you'd have to add all the numbers up, I guess, that's up pretty high. So, it's gotta be... This total price here. He would add them up.
Pump stations, right?
This is.
Right here.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing, that, right here. We have two bids so far for that, correct?
For what?
For the pump station.
Fire pond.
Fire, and fire pond, had two bids for them, right, correct?
Well, this is...
That we've opened so far.
This is all...
Oh, that's, oh, yeah, okay, how many we have?
Four total.
These are the pump stations right here, but this one, you got, yeah, uh, well, he's got them here, 540 for one, 675 for the next one, if you wanna add them, if you'll come up, probably with that $7,000 figure. But they, that's where they are, right there. These are all, this is all pump station stuff.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Yeah, I have the other ones in my hand.
Okay.
Alright, we got them pretty well written down now.
So this one here is 250 a week, fire pond 80 bucks.
Which bid was it?
Eight Touch of Home.
Eight Touch of Home.
That's for the sewer pump stations.
Again, it was what, 2?
250.
250 a week?
Yep, and 80 for the fire pond. And then the spring cleanup was, uh, one-time spring cleanup at 500. We had a fourth one going on.
I think he's got it down.
Got it there.
J Landscaping, you got that one?
Yep. Yep, so we got three, we're still...
We got one more?
We got one more.
Oh, it's this one right here, yes. Gratz.
What is it?
It's, it was, uh, his was mow and trim them all for 255. And the fire pond four times a year, that was included, 255. Quats, they had to mow and trim all the pump stations. And then the fire pond four times a year included was 255. And the spring cleanup was 250, so 255 for the mowing, but that's with the fire pond included. And spring cleanup... Was 250. Okay? So...
The J Landscaping was 120 a week?
120 a week, yes.
120 for spring cleanup?
Yes.
And, and the fire pond was 100?
That was in there.
Okay.
That was in it.
That was in there, in 120.
So I would say he's, he's a little bitter on it.
Yeah, no question.
Yes, he's a little bitter.
So I move, we award that to, award that to J Landscaping.
I just, I didn't look at it.
Weaver, Chasberg. Yes, J Landscaping, on the face. So, he is the, uh, the little bitter.
Can you move?
Yes, it is.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, I guess Weaver.
Weaver's just as a letter of reference.
I thought it was Weaver Landscaping. Says, oh, that's Weaver Excavating, that's a letter, Village Lawn and Landscaping?
Yes.
That's what it was? Okay, well, Village Lawn and Landscaping.
There you go.
They were the little bitter.
No.
No.
No, J Landscaping is a little bitter. Those are all letters of reference, Ronnie.
Oh, okay.
Okay, J Landscaping.
Yeah, there you go, yes.
There we go, well, we're down to... Which was quite a bit of difference in the bids, so... Well, we'll... See how he works that again. What else can we say?
Pass all that back to me, I'll pass you down the other four.
These bids are like a night and day.
Yeah.
Through the numbers.
About this?
Yeah, want all that this way, that one there.
I guess, here, that's it, that's all there is here.
Is that your stuff?
This here? That's just a special meeting.
Yeah, that's your stuff, that's all you want.
Yeah, that's, that's just my stuff.
Where's your next one?
These are for the other...
These are for your cemeteries.
These are cemeteries, okay. Now, maybe these would be a little, little simpler, won't have to do so much. Anyway, this first one is from, uh, Robert Gratz. And do all the primary sites, spring cleanup and repair of grass. 755 to do all the sites, 650 for spring cleanup and repair of grass areas for a total of $1,405.
That's a week, right?
But it, but it's 755 a week?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a week. And the spring cleanup was...
Oh, then, oh, that was added in for this.
Yeah, that's spring cleanup.
Got it.
This one you'll have to add up. He's got the prices here. Let me see them numbers, Henry, second right there. 755. Cleanup. This is per, that was 650.
I wonder if we should, uh... I wonder if we should, uh. Read off those twelve sites. Do you think we should do that?
Well, they're on that paper he's working on.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Which we can read them off there, I can read them off here.
Well, I don't, I, I'm just wondering if, that way we would, uh, say how many sites were, there's twelve sites there and, and everybody would know, uh, the sites were, uh, bidding.
Yeah, well, these are on their, uh, on this guy's.
Okay.
Bid too.
Are they? Okay, good enough.
So.
I know they, okay.
And it says twelve, so I'll just make sure that's what it is, twelve of them, which it probably is.
I'm sure there is, that's what our, I think that's what our.
Yeah, twelve sites.
How many of those did we end up with?
Four.
Four?
Yeah, four. This one you're gonna write down here, Mr. Touch of, uh, Touch of Home. And that is mowing the cemeteries, that's all of it included. And he's got it all in one price, nineteen thousand, sixty dollars. And the cleanup would be a thousand dollars. That's for Touch of Home.
This is eight fifty a week, plus one twenty-five for spring clean, cleanup of the Center Street Cemetery.
That's just one flat, uh, one time, one twenty-five.
It just says spring cleanup for the cemetery, for, just for that one cemetery is all it says. So that is, uh, George Harkins. Okay. There's George's.
You gotta do them. He's got him.
Oh, you gotta add them up? Yep, they're all. And that's the, we just one.
Okay.
Is that for all, I'm getting a little confused on this one.
That's one.
Um, cleanup and down here, spring cleanup, Center Street Cemetery will be one twenty-five.
Yeah.
For Leefen.
All others will be done at first mowing. So apparently it's in the first mowing charge. He didn't, he didn't specify it out.
This is only for the one?
Just for here, Pownell Center Cemetery.
And all the rest is gonna be cleaned up for?
At the, at the first mowing.
That, that's included, right?
Well, it says will, will be done at first mowing.
No, this is for that one cemetery. What I'm saying is the other ones are being cleaned up in his bid.
That's the way I read it.
Okay, alright, that, I was looking for that, everybody else is separate, so.
This one and this one I got.
Our specs do call for cleanup on all of them, okay.
Okay, so. That's yours. Yes, J H Lawns.
I got five, five twenty on this one. A week.
Who is it?
That is Jay landscaping, and then his spring cleanup is. Seven hundred and thirty.
Seven thirty?
For the springtime cleanup. Must be our Center Street Cemeteries and got some issues there, cause they're all coming in real high for that one cleanup. So that week is five twenty a week.
And that was, what was that last one?
Yep.
That's this one?
Yeah.
Jay landscaping?
Yeah, Jay landscaping. This one here is spelled out, each one of them to clean it up. We had one that doesn't show up, so I'm, it's just still, I mean, as long as it's added in there, it's fine with me.
Do we have a total on this last one? No?
Yeah, nineteen thousand something and a thousand cleanup on the one you're looking at.
Right, but we gotta break it down to a week, per week, right? It doesn't sp, it doesn't show per week, we gotta add each, each one individually up. Thirty. Thirty.
Ronnie, do you have a, a weekly charge on George?
What kind of charge on her?
George.
Yeah, that was, uh, S J H.
Yep.
Weekly was, uh, must've been eight, eight fifty. One twenty-five on the spring cleanup.
Yep. Okay, so we're just breaking out, breaking out Touch of Home.
Yep, we're doing that now. Seven hundred and thirty on a Touch of Home. Seven hundred and thirty on a Touch of Home.
Yeah, that's the same thing as, uh, Jay landscaping.
Nope. So Jay landscaping's five twenty.
Five twenty.
And their.
Yeah, seven thirty was the cleanup.
And their springtime cleanup is a thousand dollars flat.
So I guess. You gonna recommend the low bidder or what?
I move to go with the low bidder.
Okay.
Uh, Jay landscaping, five hundred and twenty dollars a week.
What do you think, Henry?
Oh, I think that's probably who we're gonna get, I'm just trying to find out where everybody's coming from. I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So Jay landscaping was the winner on that, they were the winner on the other one too, yeah?
Yeah.
So, that's, that does it for the. Lawn mowing. I don't need that. We moved right along on that, got stuck a little bit, but. Okay, special election date. What's that date, Linda?
It's there in your, you have the warning to read.
Oh, that's it.
Yep.
Yep, okay. In evidence of the town of Pownell qualified to vote at the special meetings. Are hereby notified and warned that on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, a special election will be held by Australian ballot voting at the Pownell Center Firehouse from seven AM in the forenoon until seven PM in the afternoon. To vote for the following candidates, well, uh, we don't have any candidates. Yet, I guess. That's what it's gonna say on the warning, and the selectmen to fill two years of an unexpired three-year term. Register to vote, you must apply by five PM on Wednesday, May eighteenth, if you want to vote in the special meeting. Absentee ballots are available. If you will be out of town or ill or disabled, apply at the town clerk's office by Monday, May twenty-third. You or a family member may apply in person, by phone or in writing. So that's when the special election's gonna be, and, uh, I don't know, we only had one person take out papers so far, I guess.
Right, so it's five twenty-four for the election and the deadline for the petitions are five eighteen.
Correct. Five eighteen, you gotta have your petitions in, the election will be five twenty-four.
Take care. You too.
Okay, so. Better Back Roads program grant applications, uh, they were all submitted, Linda?
Yes, um, I met with, uh, a person from B Trans yesterday and I retrieved the files that I picked up over at the Highway Department. We have one submitted for planning grant purpose only and it's to upgrade the structures inventory. Four were submitted for construction and if they're, if it's awarded, they were for projects on Mason Hill South, Soul Stream Road, Carpenter Hill Road and Snake Hill. Applications are out here, selectmen would like to review them, but we met the deadline.
Great.
That's great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we got, uh, next is Oak Hill School Road Drainers Discussion with Josh, we've been waiting patiently. So let you help us out.
My pleasure. So I'm Josh Carvall with the Agency Natural Resources, I'm part of the Rivers Program. Casey and I had met back in March and, um, I reviewed all the projects that you guys submitted for the Better Back Roads and that application. Basically, I met with him to say whether or not you guys needed stream alteration permits for those, those projects. And I do that for all the towns in the banking and Rutland County area. So the, the Oak Hill School Road project, I told Casey, it's outside my jurisdiction, it's not stream better bank. Um, um, so, but I, because he left, I told Linda that I would draw up what Casey had explained to me the plan was, which was, I had sent you guys a, it looks better in color, actually. Um, it's a map and he was basically thinking about putting catch bases and piping from Lad Road all the way down to the stream. Um, which is fine, you know, a lot of times when you have urbanized areas, roadside ditches don't work anymore, you get too much runoff from all the pavement and all the roofs. And, um, they're hard, it's hard to maintain, and there were quite a few cross culverts along that road that was actually directing runoff into people's properties and stuff like that, so it sounded like a good idea.
Sure, now, our, our question is, we went down and looked at it, and there's a DI, there's several DI's right here in this intersection. Why, could we not tap into one, the farthest DI up?
You could, yeah, I, I didn't remember exactly where it was, I didn't include it on the map, but yeah, I mean, you wanted to tap into what's there already.
Okay.
Um, and he had, Casey had talked about having like a, a settling basin in the flat area before the stream, uh, which is technically not a requirement, I mean, you guys can pipe your roadside runoff directly to the brick if you want to.
Right.
That was in an effort to, to have the sediments settle out and stuff like that.
Sure.
Before it gets discharged into the stream.
But, but again, you know, there's a whole series of DI's in that intersection there and they all tie into a twenty-four inch.
It goes into.
It goes into the stream, it's already there.
On the, on the side, so it's good.
Right.
Yeah, so it sounded like a good plan that Casey.
All we wanna do is hook up on the other end of it.
Okay, so we, we don't need a permit from the stream alterations?
No, if you guys aren't, if you were replacing the discharge pipe that's actually in the stream, um, you may need a permit, our threshold is ten cubic yards of material.
Okay.
Honestly, a pipe replacement doesn't really trigger that.
Okay.
It's usually when you're excavating out the stream, better, better bank.
Okay.
For that amount of volume, so, I think for this project, you're not gonna need.
Okay.
A permit from me, but if you, if you get awarded, are you applying for backroads grants for, for this one too?
Not under.
No.
No, okay, cause that's, it would be under category B, they do str, stormwater retrofits. I mean, it's due tomorrow at five.
It's gonna have to go the next, if.
Okay.
If we even apply for anything more, it's gonna have to be in the next year.
Gotcha, okay. Right, so he, he wasn't, he wasn't sure if he was gonna apply for it or just try to pay for it out of.
But as long as we know, we can tap into that, that highest DI that's already there right now, and just continue with that.
It sound, it sounded like a, a good idea.
Okay, good.
Cause you have a lot of, um, drainage from the hillside coming onto the road, but also with the culverts that are directing into the people's backyard, it's kind of like, uh, you're not sure what's gonna happen during the flood event, so this way, at least we'll get the water down to where you know it's gonna hit the stream.
Okay.
That's great, we solved that problem.
Terrific.
And that's, uh. Okay, so.
So Ronnie, could we, could, could we make a motion to, uh, maybe for a couple of us on the board to, to go up and, uh, measure it out and, uh, draw something up and put it out to bid and see what it looks like it's gonna cost?
Yeah, might as well, I mean.
I mean, it's a measurement from that.
It's just a measurement from the.
From the highest DI up to the intersection of Lad Road.
Right, and, uh, and just, we're just gonna pipe it solid from down to that DI, right?
Well, we'd have to have a couple, uh, have a couple DI's along the way, yeah, between them.
Yeah, to, to clean out, alright, yeah, we could, I guess we could.
I'd like to make that motion.
You gonna second that, Henry, or what are you gonna do? Or you wanna, what do you wanna do? Don't know what you wanna do.
Well, you don't want me to think too long, you know?
No, no, that's alright, that's alright.
Okay.
I'm not paying.
I do have, I do have some problems with this project, I mean, um. Wha, what are we trying to, uh, correct here?
Well, so, uh, we're trying to, uh, run more water down on the upper side of the road. That's my, that's the way I'm looking at it, we're gonna run more water down that side of the road, so it doesn't cross over and, uh, drop into them homes that are below the road. I guess there's, there's two, uh, culverts there, which if we could get that water down, down by, that's, uh.
I wonder how much of that water is coming out of, uh, uh, New Seven?
It's a big question, I don't know, you have to walk in to see where the drains.
I mean, I don't travel that much there, you know? But, uh, I did go there a few times and I do know that, um, that road's been there forever. And, uh, the discharge, uh, that goes across the old seven, uh, probably was put in then in thirties or, or earlier. Probably already was there before seven was concreted, okay, you know what I'm saying? So I don't know how old, right? So, um, I just don't know exactly, uh, I'm not saying that we, um.
My motion is only, only to.
Well, I, I don't mi, I know, I don't mind trying to, what, what, yeah, I, I understand that, uh, but I do know that, um, uh. Once you, uh, enter into a project, you've entered in. once you, uh, enter into a project, you've entered in. Know what you're entering into.
No, you're right, and if they're.
If you, you follow, I guess what I, you know, I mean, I, uh, if, uh, if the town of Pownell can, uh, can, uh, put this project together, uh, you know, I'm, I'm all for it. I'm, I'm not trying to not do something for a landowner, or whoever. But I think that our job is to just be for sure that they, there couldn't be some other things uh, done at a more reasonable cost, if it's possible. So, um, I mean, I, I don't mind bidding it, just as long as we know we're gonna be bidding it, um. So, approval to do it. Okay? Or should we look a little deeper into it before we do that? But, that's a question.
No, it's a valid question and there's, there should be drainage maps that V-Trans District One has for their structures along that section of Route Seven, so you guys can figure out where those are, um, and then decide whether or not that drainage.
I don't, I'm just saying, I know that, I know that landowners are, uh, you know, this discharge, uh, they're very upset. You know what I'm saying, so you know, you, you know, I wanna, um, I most certainly am not sitting here trying to offend anyone or, uh, but I do know that whatever discharge was down through there, um, had been going down through there for a long time and, uh.
Can I, am I allowed to make a comment? I'm one of the adjoining landowners. Um, I grew up on Bannister Hill Road where it comes right down there.
It's on Bannister Hill?
Bannister Hill came down, that road washes out all the time lately. Um, I don't know whether since they put in the Rescue Squad building or what, but that road washes terrible lately. There's a drain right there at the bottom of Bannister Hill, and then there's another one that goes around by three forty-six.
Yeah, them are all tied together.
Yeah, them are all tied together.
And that's what you're talking about, putting a drain up closer up Old Route Seven by like the Rescue Squad building and then running it down through, is that what you're saying?
From the corner of Lad Road and Old Seven, right, starting there, carrying all that water down to the intersection.
Because it's been going over the bank, past Oak Hill School Road.
Correct.
Oak Hill School, down into the neighborhood.
Correct.
I don't know if it came.
That, but that's why I'm bringing that up, I'm, I'm, you know, and, and I'm bringing it up, same reason you just said, hey, I'll come all of a sudden.
Yeah, and that road, Old Seven went in fifty years ago.
You know, I'll come all of a sudden.
Yeah, but.
No, I'm not saying that, no, and I'm not saying that it hasn't always washed out some, you know, come on.
But I don't think it's washed the way it has been lately. And I live right at the bottom of Bannister Hill and my driveway's right at the end of it and it washes terrible. And Bannister Hill Road washes terrible and I, and I don't know why so bad. And it used to wash down Bannister Hill, go in my father's old house backyard, over the bank down into my driveway. And the guy fixes backyard and it doesn't go down over there anymore, now goes straight down, right into the road, washes all the dirt in this last bad rain we had. The road was covered with dirt from Bannister Hill.
So I do know that what the project we're working on is not gonna have any effect.
On Bannister Hill.
On Bannister Hill, that's another issue.
Right. That, but that's where the wa- water's still coming from up the hill, coming down. Okay, so.
Something needs to be done with Bannister Hill too, but what you're talking about is losing water.
We're trying to catch it on the bottom, am I doing that correct?
Right, from what we've learned, since the Rescue Squad building was built, all the property the Rescue Squad pitches towards Lad Road and the, the water that's always come down through there has now multiplied with the Rescue Squad building.
Well.
So you're thinking if you put a drain there, it'll run right down to the other two drains and the other one to the brick?
That's right, that's right, keep it all on, would be the east side of that road, instead of carrying it across.
The only question I have, Steve, so we've got somebody that does know something about drainage and stuff.
But we do know that the original.
Any way of doing that without a, a round pipe?
Without putting it into a pipe?
Three-quarter pipe, or a half pipe, or something.
You mean.
Or concrete, or a black top it, or something? Yeah.
Um.
The only reason I say that is because, you know, and, uh, lots of times you get obstructions and long, long culverts. There's a driveway there, one house here has a driveway, we gotta go under that.
Two.
There are two, two places. That I can understand, but in between that, like from the, from Lad Road down to the, uh, well, past Oak Hill School, uh, Lad Road down to, I don't know, halfway down, I guess, to Bannister Road where the two houses are, if we got by them two houses. I mean, is there, is there a way of having an, an open, uh, cause even, or even an open ditch, you can clean it easier, that's all.
You definitely can, yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's an option. So this was just what Casey had thought up, so there's other options out there, you'd have to size it properly, you'd have to look at, you know, what's coming off of Seven, what's coming off of Lad Road, to make sure that you're not, you know, creating a ditch that's just gonna flood out the road, um.
No, I mean, there's plenty, I, I think there's plenty of room there to take it, and of course, we gotta, we gotta put tubes under these driveways, of course.
Should do, right.
In order to, then get them down.
And you're gonna sway, put swales in front of those two houses?
Yeah, that's right, yes.
There's a spring right there, right beside our, what's the name of our landfill guy?
Tom Shuey.
Tom Shuey's house is right there and on the end of his yard, next to the next driveway, is a spring that comes right out of his yard. It's always been there since I was a kid, and that goes right down into the drain.
Yeah, well, that could go down, all I'm saying is, I think it's easier to maintain, to keep something, if you had, I don't know what they, what they have available, but I was thinking if you had a half pipe or something, then we.
I mean, I, I've seen paved ditches, um.
Whatever.
But if you have a, a rock lined ditch that's properly sized, those hold up very well in a situation like this.
And the water slows down.
And the water slows down with the roughness of the rock.
Absolutely.
I, I'd suggest.
So I mean, MM sections rather than covered all.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm not saying that, you know, th- this is a, this is a problem, there's no, let's, you know, pull right up to the table and say it the way, it, it, there is a problem there. Now, the thing is, it's thus be darn sure that we hash over, um, what route to take and, and, and then move forward, alright, and I don't mean to hang around forever neither, but I think you're gonna tell us that maybe we could find some other, uh, information or somebody else or.
Other resources, so Todd Eaton's part of the, uh, local roads program out of V-Trans and they often provide towns with, um, troubleshooting services like that. So I'd suggest that you guys contact him and I can give you his number.
Okay.
So that's, he's, he's helped other towns with drainage problems and he covers the whole state and he'd be more than happy to come down and take a look or probably come up with some really good suggestions, what I have to do.
I mean, we looked at it, you know.
We looked at it, but I mean, we're all, none of us are professional.
We are who we are, you know, okay, we are who we are.
And we don't wanna do something and then have to do it over again.
Yeah.
You know.
Good choice.
Two, two years later, whatever, say, oh, that wasn't good. So, if we can contact that person, maybe he can give us a little guidance and we'll get this thing moving.
Yep, definitely.
That sounds great.
I mean, I, I just, you know, and, and I, well, let's get it moving, that's, that's the whole idea here, uh.
Good idea.
Alright. So.
Do you think, do you, do you think it's possible that we, uh, that he, would have time to you get, you know, take a look at it with us or?
Yeah, definitely, definitely, I'll, I'll send Linda his, his contact information.
Okay.
Good, that's good.
Good.
Then we can.
Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
And that's something you can do soon?
I, I would think so, he's been busy with the, the Better Roads Grants, um, going out to site visits, but that's all due tomorrow, so I would think he'd have time next week, he's out of, um, Pulteney, and he often comes down this way.
Who, who works on the awards? Who already know that?
Um, so that's also part of V-Trans, Alan May runs it. There's actually a selection committee made up of V-Trans folks and A and R folks, staff members and they all kind of, they have some format that they use in order to evaluate the, the applications.
I was told that probably by June first, award notices will go out.
Yep, yeah, and then I think the funds are available first of, first of, um, sorry, first of July. And then you have eighteen months, I believe, to spend it, so if you don't get to it this year, um, the funds are still available to you next year.
Oh, we're doing quite well, going through that money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Casey explained it to me.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
We slowed up a little bit, 'cause we. We're short on road groupings, so, that slowed us down a little bit.
I'm sure we'll catch up, I usually do when it comes to money.
So I guess.
Getting rid of it, you know?
Linda's got all that information.
Good, that's great, I appreciate that.
I guess we can move on to.
Uh, let's see, okay, the corridor plan.
Uh, who's the corridor plan with Mike and Josh to fill us in?
I'm Michael Batch with the Benton County Regional Commission. If you recall, back in January or February, we had a meeting with the Planning Commission to talk about your Hazard Mitigation Plan. Well, one of the things that was identified there was the problems of especially Lad Brook backing up and blocking areas that were then flooding the mobile home parks. And I came across, so I didn't come across, I was sent a grant application for what's called the Ecosystem Restoration Program. And that's basically a, a program that looks at, uh, some of the things that impair surface waters. Erosion, uh, stormwater issues, um, Lad Brook and Tubbs Brook have both been identified as having a great deal of erosion due to road crossings and some culverts. I know you've had some problems with both of those, 'cause I sat down with actually Casey before he left and also with, with Nelson and, uh, Mike Slattery, we kind of identified problems areas in the town and those came up quite a bit. So, there had been a study done in the mid-two thousands identifying areas along the main stem of the Husick that were in need of revegetation and, and like, because they were, um, basically had soil going into the, into the river and that piles up in, in the stream, making it difficult for aquatic life. Um, also impairing, you know, human uses of the streams. So this program, what, what we're proposing here, what we, what we did, we got the grant to basically do what's called a corridor plan, which would, would look at the entire area, the Husick main stem and Lad and Tubbs Brooks in, in more detail. And what we're shooting for is to identify potential projects that could be done to reduce some of these issues, some of these problems. Some of these kinds of projects might be stormwater erosion control measures. Some could be structural, uh, measures to, uh, allow flow to, some of the stuff you just talked about. Um, some of it might involve, are there ways to, um, enhance areas to allow for water storage so that the water isn't flowing as fast downstream as we, as we've talked about, are there areas where, um, it might be worth thinking about some land acquisitions so that if people are losing land to the river, they can be compensated for that, a number of projects, these, this is a, this is all something we need to work through. We would identify about twenty-five of those and then prioritize five. And that opens a door to further funding to actually implement those kinds of projects. So the idea is to, if you recall when I first told you about Hazard Mitigation Plans, you do a plan because it opens up the doors to funding. Similar kind of thing, we get, if we get to this corridor plan stage, it then opens the door to further funding. It does not obligate you to do anything, um, but we do need you to participate. This, we're, we would be putting, we've, we've, we're contracting with a consulting firm called Fitzgerald Environmental Consulting, they're in Colchester, I think. They've done a lot of this kind of stuff. They actually did a project in Rupert where they identified a number of stormwater management projects and, and I think one of those is now being applied for, for backroads funding to, to implement. So, um, that's basically the idea. What I'm hoping you all will do is, we're gonna have a, a planning team and I'd like to have somebody from the town. Originally, I thought Casey would be the perfect person, 'cause he knows the, the issues. Casey's not with us anymore, so that's basically what it, I'm, I'm open to questions, Josh can help me with questions, but this is basically a planning study to identify problem areas and then solutions for those problem areas.
I know, just recently, um, we've looked at, uh, Lad, Lad Road and Lad Brook.
Yep.
There's some pretty, um, interesting scenarios there for problems alongside the road and the river there. That we're just actually, they're looking at repairing one of them tomorrow temporarily, um.
This may not solve all of your problems.
Right.
But it will.
Right.
Give, give us a better handle on them and begin to provide some direction.
Sure, and as far as Tubbs Road, I'm not familiar with any issues there.
Well, apparently you had, you've, you've had to do a number of culvert replacements, and I've been up there and it, it, you can see where the stream is really incised in, in quite a few areas and there, and it's, and it's, um, uh, probably the road is eroding into the stream. Those are the kinds of things that aren't really good for streams.
Sure, sure, I understand.
If we can reduce that, that would be great.
Right.
Although it's getting more and more stricter every day, as far as erosion, uh, just whisper water, you know?
Yeah.
Right, you know, right, I mean, uh, that's, uh, that's an issue. I mean, that is an issue now, I mean, before it may have been, um, discussed, but now it's a issue, right, yeah.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I mean, uh, any water runoff, uh, from highways, et cetera, um, you know.
And that affect, that affects someone or something.
You know, it gets deep, right, so I think we all know that and it's, so there's no question that, and as far as Lad Road goes, uh, you know, uh.
Yeah, to be honest, I would love to do all the tributaries, but we don't have enough money to do that.
Right, right.
If you look at them all, they probably all have.
They all have issues, I'm sure, right, right, you know, I mean, hey, listen, but, but you have to work on, uh, this.
Those are the two that had the highest priority and, you know, you, you go where you go.
But both Lad Road, where that comes down and dumps into, well, by the railroad.
Yes.
It makes a turn.
Yes.
Water doesn't really like to turn.
No, it doesn't like fast changes.
So that backs up, you got, you have some more erosion for that. And the same thing with the Tubbs.
Mm-hmm.
That gets down and when it, once it goes, after it goes across three forty-six, it flattens out and it's real flat. And the railroad trestle, uh, for that's where the train goes over, there's a bridge down there, tracks were, and that's like a dam. And that keeps getting more and more sand, silt, gravel, whatever you wanna call it, so I, I think, well, I think both of these waterways could, of course, I'm not a, a stream expert either, but I think that both of them could be much improved if, uh, we had, they could go in the river a little easier. You can't go in higher water than, than what you are when all they're backing up. See, I mean, the river isn't bad, I think that, that kinda cleanses itself pretty good every time, and it, we get high water. Husick comes up quick, goes down quick, it always does. But then, both them places are, are horrible. They tried to do something, uh, at Lad Road a couple of years ago, they did a little work over there and tried to, and also they worked on the, of course, they got them berms around the, the trailer park and things like that. But, I mean, Lad Road, I think, is a lot more precarious to a lot of this stuff filling in, 'cause the banks go pretty near straight down to that brook.
They are.
Down to Lad Brook, I mean, it's, it's awful.
Well, I don't, I don't know what the solutions are either, but I think sometimes you have to take a step back or get somebody with a different viewpoint.
Yeah.
To give you some ideas that may be something you haven't thought about, or maybe bigger than you've thought about and you just have to realize, well, this is a long-term project.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Everything actually you're doing is a long-term project, every, the things you just talked about are, oh, we need to fix this road, we need to fix this and everything sort of begins to come together and it's, you just keep chipping away at it. But, but if you have that big picture of you, it helps you figure out how to chip at it, rather than if you just fix this thing and then something else breaks down here. It's kinda like a, it's all connected. So if you all want, can appoint someone to my committee, that would be great, I, my suggestion would be, I think Mike Slattery from the Planning Commission would be great. Or someone else from the Planning Commission, or if one of you wanna volunteer and.
I can't be doing everything, I don't mind going around once in a while, but.
How, how often do you meet and, and?
We'll probably meet like two or three times, it's not, this is gonna, this can be a project, it's, the consultants can start some of their work.
I'd be willing to, I'd be willing. I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to step in.
Okay, that'd be great.
Sure.
The other thing we might need help with, and I can probably talk to Barbara about this, is they may need to contact landowners, so we'll need some help with landowner in names, and, so we don't wanna go on people's property if they don't know who they are.
Correct.
So we wanna be able to contact landowners.
Sure.
Okay. That'd be great. So I'll let you know where we're, where we stand, and we'll probably have a meeting sometime in May.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Good. Oh, and one last thing, I know this isn't on your agenda, having a household hazardous waste event?
My other hat. So normally, we have our chairman read it, read the date and time.
Make sure we put it on the TV.
Yeah.
Do you need extra copies, or you good?
I'm good, they're all old.
Forget. Household hazardous waste collection for residents and small business of Arlington, Bennetton, Dorset, Lassenberry, Manchester, Pownell, Rupert, Sangate, Searsburg, Shasbury, Stamford, Sunderland, and Woodford. Saturday, May fourteenth, twenty sixteen, eight AM to one PM, Bennetton Transfer Station. The collection is free for residents, proof of residency will be required. Small businesses must pre-register and pre-pay for the amount delivered by May sixth, twenty sixteen. Bennetton Police will be accepting prescription pharmaceuticals, what to bring, any substance with labels that say caustic, toxic, corrosive, poison, flammable, danger, warning, caution, used in an open environment. Examples include from the house cleaners, from, uh, drain cleaners, bathroom cleaners, toilet, oven, carpentry, upholstery, carpet and upholstery, disinfectants, glues, adhesives, resin, uh, floor metal polishers, polishes, hobby, art supplies, photochemicals, mercury items, including switches, thermometers, thermostats, fluorescent tubes, compact fluorescent lamps, nail polisher remover, perfume, hairsprays, aerosols, and air fresheners, and from the shop, oil-based and latex paint, lead-based paint, stains, varnishes, turpentine, shellac, wood preservers, fillers, putty, adhesives, paint stripper, thinner, solvents, acids, alcohol, lighter fluid, roofing tar, creosol, from the garage, kerosene, gasoline, antifreeze, brake, brake fluid must be, I guess, transmission?
Probably forgot to work for you.
Yeah, bring your transmission.
Radiator flush, yeah.
Bring the whole thing.
Yeah, bring the, must be transmission fluid, I hear. Radiator must be flushes or what have you, or antifreeze is already on there, wiper fluids, auto and more batteries, uh, creosol, asphalt, driveway sealer, engine degreasers, cleaners, car cleaners, wax, polishes, and from the yard, pesticides, herbicides, fungicides, fertilizers, pool chemicals, flea and tick control products, no pest strips, insect sprays, myrratic acid, naphtha, camphor, mothballs. This event does not accept televisions and computers, or alkaline or rechargeable batteries. However, these are accepted at the transfer station during normal hours free of charge. Used motor oil, pressurized cylinders, and propane tanks, as well as other items, are accepted for a fee at the transfer station during regular hours. That's at Casella's, Bennetton.
So basically, they'll take anything that they will bring?
They'll take just about anything. And, uh, what not to bring, sharps, needles, dried and hardened latex paint, radioactive materials, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, or explosives, ammunition and fireworks. This event sponsored by the Bennetton County Solid Waste Alliance, Town of Bennetton, Casella Waste Management, Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, and Vermont Agency of Agriculture. For more information or to pre-register a business, contact Michael Batch at M. Batch at B C, B C R, C V T dot org, or eight oh two, I guess he wants his number on here too, four four two, oh seven, one three.
I get a lot of calls.
You'll get a lot of calls.
I do. People are already calling me, can I bring this, can I bring that?
Yeah, good. I imagine these will be posted around, these, these things all over the place. So it's a big event, so if you've got anything in your garage, you're in your home or whatever, it's a good time to get rid of it.
'Cause your only next option to do that is in the fall.
Please put it on your website.
Yeah. And your next option would probably be in the fall to do this, so...
October usually, right?
Or we now have an agreement with Rutland Solid Waste District, people can bring it to Rutland at any time, but they'll have to pay.
Yeah.
This is free, but if you need to go to Rutland, you can bring it to the Rutland Solid Waste District.
So we're still doing basically two times a year?
Yes. But the second one will be in Dorset. There won't be another one in Bangton.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So everybody, it's a good chance to get rid of all these hazardous things that you keep tripping over when you're out in the garage and stuff.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sorry, I know it's not on your agenda, but can I ask when the date for the applications for the road forming position have to be in?
Thank you.
Is there a...
Yeah, it's everywhere. Um, the selectmen had it positioned until Phil filled, so there was no...
There's no ending date?
Nope.
So we could make a decision in the next couple of weeks, or it could be a couple months?
Do we have any applications right now?
Two.
We got two so far, I guess, that's all.
Well, I think that, uh, we was gonna, uh, uh, Nelson, you know, he isn't here, of course, so I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna say something that, but I recall, uh, he wanted to be for sure that we broadened out with a little advertisement to find out what, what, what was available out there, okay? So, um, and we kinda left it open. I, I think, um, I think we were more interested in filling the seat, uh...
Does the ad run in the banner, Linda, or...
The banner, the eagle, um, it was just placed, uh, the Vermont League online. It will be in the periodical when it comes out for May one, um, and I just placed it, it's the paper that replaced the Penny Saber. It's in that one, it's just going in, so it's...
So if you haven't, if the paper's coming out May one, you probably won't do anything until after May, May one?
It's their decision, not mine.
We're kinda fortunate right now that we're not overwhelmed.
Yeah.
And we have a, an interim guy that's, you know, kinda running the show a little bit. But of course, we'd like people who have an interest to get their application in, 'cause I mean, if we, if we get a bunch of them, we're, we're gonna have to interview them, it's gonna take a little time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, if, you know, if, if we can get some...
It's basically just hitting the banner, I've just noticed that it came out this week.
Okay.
So it's fresh.
If we can get a, a few of them, I'm, I'm sure we probably could, uh, you know, I think that would make us kinda wanna move, drag a little faster.
All right, just wanted to know.
Well, we'd like to fill the position, because it's pretty important.
All this web, web, website business, can we put this on our web?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how about we, I don't know who puts it on, I don't know that much about it, but I just thought that this would be a start.
What is the, the web, um, address, Linda? I went on again today, and I had something from two thousand twelve, with two dead people out and everything.
It doesn't say the official site, like most, most would do. It says townofpownell dot com.
I Googled it, and it came up.
I would like to see it say the official site.
With Doris Lilly still on it, Don Prowdy still on it.
Yeah, I realize that. I don't even know who, who that was, whose site it was. It, it wasn't, it wasn't even a Pownell, Town of Pownell's site was someone else's site initially.
And then I found another one, and it had a link, and it went back to the old one.